To public hearing, my name is Jack Wall and I’m the chairman of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. Commissioner Dee Oliver, George Alcaraz, and John Costin will not be in attendance today. Before we get started, I’ve asked Commissioner Cuellar to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Horsley. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today with humility, thanking you for your guidance and wisdom. As we begin this hearing, we ask you to guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Help us to remember our responsibility to serve our community with insight guided by understanding, wisdom, and respect for all. As we make decisions today, help us to promote the common good as we work together for the betterment of the great city of Virginia Beach. As your servants, we seek blessing on our deliberations and our efforts here today. Amen.
Could you please join me in the pledge? Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I’ve asked Mr. Redmond to lead us or to introduce the members of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will make a mistake, so I apologize in advance. But I’m going to start over here on the right side, what is my right side for if you’re out there, it’ll be your left side, or if you’re watching on television. That’s Kay Wilson. She is a deputy city attorney and in the purview of her responsibilities is planning and community development. This gentleman at the end of our dais here is Michael Clemmons, not to be confused with the star running back when I was in college at William &amp; Mary. Same name, which is not to say he’s not athletic. He is a political science professor at Old Dominion University and he represents the Centerville District?
Second.
Second. Okay. These numbers things are really freaking me out. One day, we’ll get used to them. Holly Cuellar is a consultant and she serves at large. Right. This is Mr. John Costin. He is a retired, well, this is where you’d normally sit. He is a retired fire captain. He’s unable to be with us today. My name’s Dave Redmond. I am a commercial real estate broker and I represent the, well, the Bayside District. We’ll see what happens here in the next few months when these numbers all get moved around. Don Horsley serves at large. He is a farmer in the southern part of the city and he is our longest-serving member on and off for the better part of 40 years. Jack Wall is an engineer by trade. He represents the Rose Hall District. He is a, he has served as vice chairman and now serves as chairman of the Planning Commission. The fellow who is normally to Jack’s left is the aforementioned George Alcaraz. George represents the Beach District and he is our vice chairman. He is unable to be with us today. I think he’s ill. On the other side of that would be Dee Oliver. Dee unfortunately is also not able to join us today. She serves at large and she has a few different things she does for a living. She’s an author and a business owner and does some, I think, some consulting of her own. She too is unable to be with us. Mr. Weiner. David Weiner is a commercial salesman in the building industry. He represents the Kempsville District. He too is a former vice chairman and a former chairman of the Planning Commission. To his left is David Bradley. David represents the Princess Anne District. He is a retired budget director in the city of Virginia Beach. And before we came in here, I overheard him talking about football, so that’s good. We probably need a visit up later. Barry Frankenfield, who sits right next to him, represents the Lynn Haven District. He is also not just a retired city employee, but was once planning director. So he brings a wealth of knowledge in that, in that context. And on the end, not but lot, last but not least is Mr. Bobby Tahan. Bobby is the current planning director and he has a number of very fine staff helping him out who are with us today. And Bobby’s going to take a second and introduce those folks. Mr. Tahan.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Clerk in today, we have Pam Sandlip and Madison Harris. Starting with the Planning Administration team, we have Waddell and Marshall Coleman. And we will call out Carolyn Smith, who is now retired because hopefully, she’s probably watching because she can’t help herself. So we’ll just do that anyway. Part of the zoning, also with the Planning Administration team, we have Elizabeth Nowak and Michaela McKinney. And then we also have our zoning administration team with our zoning administrator Hannah Sabo, Garrett Canigan, and Brandon Hackney.
All right. That was a lot to have to take in, but thank you, Mr. Tahan, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Next, I’ve asked the clerk to describe the rules and order business for today’s meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. We request that cell phones be put on silent during this meeting. Following is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission agenda. The order of business for this public hearing, withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent agenda. The second order of business is a consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, in-person speakers will be called next, and then speakers participating via WebEx. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. In the case of WebEx speakers, if the speaker does not respond or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next order of business. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, thank you, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is considerations for withdrawals or deferrals. And we’re going to start with withdrawals. Please come forward if you have any items to be withdrawn. Seeing none, we’re going to move on to deferrals. Please come forward if you have items to be deferred.
Good afternoon, Chairman Wall. Members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney representing the applicants on cases two and three, 1900 Virginia Beach Boulevard LP. We’re requesting this to be deferred for 30 days. I discovered that we had failed in the use permit application to include a part of the bulk storage yard that is on the backs of lots six and seven that are depicted and have, it’s been a bulk storage yard since at least the early 60s, if not beyond, but that was an error, so we need to correct that error. And the landscaping plan has a fence in the wrong spot as well. So appreciate the 30-day deferral.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Madam Clerk, do we have somebody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda items eight and nine have requested an indefinite deferral and their representative, Lisa Murphy, will be joining us via WebEx. Mr. Murphy, begin your comments.
Good afternoon, Chairman Wall, members of the Planning Commission. I apologize, I can’t be there in person today, but we are requesting, actually, we’re requesting a 30-day deferral of items eight and nine so, so that the applicant can complete the stormwater analysis and get that reviewed by staff.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murphy, would you, would you consider an indefinite deferral on this one?
Yes, that would be fine, although it’s our expectation that, that we will be ready to go next month, but that’s, that’s fine.
Okay, we, Planning Commission has also been made aware that agenda item number 12 has requested a, an indefinite deferral as well, and that’s agenda item number 12. Christiana Rojas is the applicant and Red Mill North LLC is the property owner. All right. Do I have a motion to defer items two and three for 30 days and agenda items number eight and nine and 12 indefinitely?
Mr. Chairman, I move for a deferral of items two and three for 30 days, eight and nine indefinite, and item number 12 indefinite.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, the vote is open.
Okay, are there any abstentions? Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Weiner and a second by Mr. Horsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By a vote of eight to zero, agenda items two and three have been deferred for 30 days. Agenda items eight and nine and 12 have been deferred indefinitely.
Okay, thank you. The, the next order of business is, is the consent agenda, and I’m going to turn that over to Mr. Weiner, who is going to be acting as the, the vice chair in place of Mr. Alcaraz today to run that portion of the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we have nine applications on the consent agenda. The first one is item number four, Earthscapes Enterprise Valerius Properties, conditional use permit for bulk storage yard at 619 623 London Bridge Road. Is the applicant available? There we go. Welcome, sir.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. My name is Chris Pakta, counsel for the applicant, Earthscapes Enterprises LLC. We appreciate being put on the consent agenda, and we also wanted to thank Ms. Coleman for her and, and her staff’s hard work on this project.
Are the conditions acceptable?
The conditions are acceptable.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we’ve asked Mr. Bradley to read us into the record, please.
Thank you. The applicant has requested a conditional use permit to operate a bulk storage yard on 2.45 acre portion of a parcel located on the, in the London Bridge Industrial Park West of Naval Air Station Oceana. A buyright office building is also proposed on the property for the applicant’s landscaping business. The property is comprised of two parcels totaling 8.21 acres that is zoned both I-1 Light industrial and V-2 community business. The applicant intends to resubdivide the parcels to create a total of three lots. Planning staff recommended this. There’s no speakers at this meeting, so the Planning Commission decided to put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Next is item number seven, Princess Anne Country Club. Princess Anne Country Club, an Expansion 1 LLC to a modification of conditions at 3800 Pacific Avenue and 3901 Holly Road. Welcome, sir.
Pleasure to be here, sir. Pleasure. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name’s RJ Nutter, represent the applicant. We appreciate being placed on consent agenda and thanks, staff, they did a lot of work on this application. It’s one little house, but took a lot of work, so we got there. And so thank you, appreciate it as always. And if I have any questions, I’ll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mrs. Cuellar is volunteering to read us into the record.
Yes. The applicant is requesting a change in nonconformity to expand a nonconforming club use to include the property at 3901 Holly Road. It’s a 1940s one-story bungalow. The Princess Anne Country Club members and their guests will be able to use the house for event space and overnight lodging. This use would be exclusive to club members and guests pursuant to the Princess Anne Country Club policies and is such is considered an accessory use to the existing club. Staff is recommending it. There are no objections. The commission also recommends it for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next is item number 10, AT Associates, modification of conditions of motor vehicle sales and services at 2717 Virginia Beach Boulevard. There he is. Welcome, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. I’m Tom Barton from Beach Ford and AT Associates. I appreciate the commission’s consideration and the hard work already put in. We’re here to request that we build a 50,000-square-foot commercial service center on, on property. We’ve kind of outgrown the existing service department and we quite regularly have conflicts with our retail customers versus our commercial and fleet customers. So we need, we need more capacity and we, we think the building will be a complement to the property as it is and will help us satisfy the demand that’s already there.
Great. Are all the conditions acceptable?
Pardon me?
Are all the conditions acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. All right. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I’ve asked Mr. Clemmons to read us into the record, please.
The applicant has requested a modification of conditions, which in staff’s opinion is acceptable, given the predominance of auto-centric uses in the immediate vicinity. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan’s policies and land use goals for the Lynn Haven area as the auto repair business provides a needed service to the area and is compatible with a number of other automobile-related service uses along Virginia Beach Boulevard. A portion of this property is located within the 70 to 75 decibel, but the majority of the site is located within the greater than 75-decibel noise zone of the air installations compatible use zones. There’s no anticipation of a significant increase in traffic volume with the addition of this use, given that the maintenance building is closed to the general public. And based on the considerations that outlined above, the commission places this item on the consent agenda, subject to the conditions.
Thank you, sir. Next is item number 11, Fantasy Tattoo Company, WS, WCSC LLC, conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor at 1920 Centerville Turnpike. Welcome, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Daniel Cardona. This is Jamie Carey. We’re our partners in Fantasy Tattoo. Thanks so much for hearing us today.
Yes, sir. Are all the conditions acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Frankenfield has volunteered to read this into the record because he said he always wanted to get a tattoo.
Well, you didn’t have to tell everything, but that’s absolutely true. This applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a traditional tattoo parlor at the Woods Corner Shopping Center. The property meets all the requirements of staff and city ordinances and has support from 10 other retail operators in the shopping center. And so for all those reasons, staff recommend approval and Planning Commission recommends consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is item number 13, Nikola Georgiev, Georgiaev, Georgiaev, conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 303 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 1305. Is there a representative available? No representative available?
Mr. Vice Chairman, yes, he’s, he is on WebEx. Mr. Georgiev, if you would, state your comments, state your name and then your comments, please.
Good afternoon. This is Nick Georgiev. All the conditions are acceptable. My name is Nick Georgiev.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Redmond has agreed to read this into the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, agenda item number 13 is a conditional use permit for short-term rental by Mr. Nick Georgiev, whom we just heard from. The application meets, broadly meets the, the requirements of the ordinance in all the various ways, parking and, and the things that we typically look for, and we place it on consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Next one is items number 14 through 19, conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 208 10th Street. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney representing 208 10th Street LLC. All the 21 conditions as recommended in the staff report are acceptable to my clients and appreciate Brandon’s work on the applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mrs. Cuellar is, is going to read us into the record, please.
The applicant is asking for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. There are six four-bedroom units. They are located in the oceanfront resort area and the property addresses are 945, 965, 961, 957, 953, 949 Pacific Avenue. Staff’s approve it. The conditions have been accepted and we want this to be on the consent agenda.
Thank you, ma’am. Next is item number 20, Host My Home LLC, David Doughty, conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 529 22nd Street. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
My name’s Sierra Alderman with Host My Home LLC. I’m representing David Doughty for 529 22nd Street. We agree to all conditions and let me know if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Redmond would like to read this into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Agenda item, application number 20, Host My Home LLC, is a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 529 22nd Street. This application broadly meets the requirements of the ordinance, finding no objectionable items, we therefore recommend it for consent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is item 21, JD Enterprises, for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 512 19th Street. Is there an applicant? Welcome, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Taylor. This is my partner, Daniel Davis. We’re with JD Enterprises Virginia LLC. Just want to thank the commission for hearing our items today. We’re grateful to be here. It’s been a long journey so far. We agree with all the conditions and recommendations that have been made and we’ll do our best to make sure they’re all being followed.
Great, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Redmond has agreed to read this one into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Agenda item number 21 is an application by JD Enterprises Virginia LLC for a conditional use permit, specifically a short-term rental at 512 19th Street in Virginia Beach. The, the application broadly meets the requirements of our ordinance and finding no objectionable items, the commission has therefore placed it on our consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Next is item 22 through 28, JD Enterprises, conditional use permit for short-term rentals. Sorry, I should have probably just told you to stay up here. Just state your name for the record one more time.
All right. I’m Justin Taylor. This is my partner, Daniel Davis. We’re with JD Enterprises VA LLC.
Thank you, sir. Are all the conditions acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. You’re good. All right. Any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? None? Mr. Redmond, one more time, please.
Mr. Weiner, agenda items number 22 through 38, an application by JD Enterprises Virginia LLC for conditional use permits, plural, for multiple units of short-term rental at 516 19th Street. The, the application broadly meets the requirements of the, of our short-term rental ordinance, finding no objectionable items, we therefore place it upon consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval on the consent agenda. That’s the end of our consent agenda. I move for approval on the consent agenda, items four, seven, 10, 11, 13, 14 through 19, 20, 21, 22 through 38.
Okay, all right, thank you. So the Planning Commission places those on the consent agenda. And so the motion is? The Planning Commission places those agenda items on the consent agenda. The, the, the motion, thank you. So do I have a motion?
You made it.
You made it, right. But did you make it on?
Yes.
Okay, I see that. Just checking. Is there, so the motion is made by Mr. Weiner?
Need a second.
Is there a second? Okay, so a second by Ms. Cuellar. Are there any abstentions? Okay. The vote is, vote is open.
Vote is open. By a vote of eight to zero, agenda items four, seven, 10, 11, 13, 14 through 19, 20, 21, and 22 through 38 have all been recommended for approval by consent.
Okay, thank you. If you had an application that was on the consent agenda, your request will now be scheduled for an upcoming, upcoming city council meeting. Staff will contact you about the date for those applicants on the consent agenda. Thank you for your participation. You may remain in the meeting either virtually or in person, but you are free to leave. And we’ll give, give the consent agenda applicants a few minutes. Okay, so thank you. The next order of business is the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, we are ready for the, the first, first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item is agenda item number one, ORP Ventures LLC, an application for a subdivision variance, section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations at 820 24th Street in Council District 6, formerly the Beach District.
Thank you, Pam. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney. My clients are here today. Mr. Bichard couldn’t be here, but Josh Motto and a couple of other folks in their office are here. This is an application for which I provided you all a handout this morning during the, at your seats for your informal. This is a unique situation. The property in question is zoned R5D. It is, that zoning exists only on this piece of property and the one directly adjacent to it. The property is in the original Woodland subdivision from 1925, and I’ve provided a copy of that subdivision plat in the handout that I gave you this morning. And if you look at the two maps, the zoning maps I provided, it shows you that, that area, and those I’m sure of you who have been in the area, 24th Street, Barberton runs essentially north-south. 24th Street connects Bird Neck Road to the oceanfront, fairly heavily traveled road. Everything pretty much to the north of 24th Street in this subdivision is now multifamily from anywhere from A18, A12, A36. The area south of 24th Street and east of Barberton, as well as a, a little bit to the west of Barberton, is a hodgepodge. There’s a significant amount of R7.5 single-family zoning, and then there’s also a fair amount of A12 zoning and some, some A18 as well, with some multifamily and some duplex, triplex development. I put a summary at the bottom of the first page of the handout I provided, and I’ve summarized it in blocks one through five and in blocks 10 and 11, and the blocks are shown on the subdivision plat of Woodland. There are 70-plus single-family homes on originally platted lots that are now zoned R7.5, and those lots are 35 feet in width and average 4,500 square feet. R7.5 zoning requires a lot width of 75 feet and on corner lots, a lot width of 85 feet. Needless to say, none of those lots are anywhere near that. And they require 7,500 square feet in lot size. So the lots that are out there, on average, are 53% below the minimum lot width requirement of 75 or 85 feet, and they’re 35 feet, and 40% below the, the minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet, when they are mostly, and I don’t think there’s any that are 5,000 square feet. There may be one that’s very elongated, but they’re completely nonconforming by substantial amounts. And there are at least 17 original 35-foot-wide lots that have either a duplex or a triplex on it and less than 5,000 square feet. This proposal is for a subdivision of this 80-foot-by-125-foot lot that’s zoned R5D to 240-by-125 lots that meet the lot’s requirement for a single-family dwelling in R5D of 5,000 square feet. And they are 40 feet wide rather than 50, so they’re 20% below the minimum lot width. Most importantly, they are Most importantly, they are wider and larger than at least 95% of the existing developed or developable single-family lots in this immediate community zoned R7.5. The proposed setbacks, we have got larger setbacks, they're, and that's, that's for the purpose of having the property to the east of us, stay out of the 50-foot seaward portion of the resource protection area that's applied to it now. Obviously, didn't exist until 1991. But our, our homes here will be set back 20 feet from each other. There'll be a total between the two. Whereas in the rest of the community, the setbacks in R7.5 are 5 and 10, and they're typically, you'll have 15 feet tween, but there are many that have variances and others that the five meets the five, so they're actually 10 feet apart from each other in some cases. This proposal will result in a less dense development per square foot, greater separation of the two units, and I've given you handouts. You've got the staff report. You can go and look for yourself. These are, will be extremely attractive, two-story homes that are totally consistent with the development pattern, again, and larger in terms of the size of the lots. The properties, Wawa mentioned this morning, the two, there are four properties directly to the west of this that have redeveloped. The two that are immediately west were not actually redeveloped by the Bichards. They're the three-story units that are on, single-family homes, I should say. They're currently tax-assessed at $572,000 each. The two that are immediately west of that, the two-story homes, which I've given you pictured of in the handout, are very similar to what you see in this application. Those were done by the Bichards. And while they're only two stories and they have less square footage, more in keeping with the community in the three stories, their tax-assess values are $562,000 each. All those green dots that I have on the handout showing where the single-family homes are, they're typically assessed tax-wise for the, in the low to mid to upper threes, 300,000s. There are a couple that are in the fours, but overwhelmingly, they're in threes. We are seeing here organic redevelopment. 24th Street doesn't cost taxpayers a dime. 24th Street is a heavily-traveled street, unlike 23rd and 22nd, which are dead-end cul-de-sacs, nicer for people to have single-family homes. But all these will wind up being redeveloped on 35-foot-wide lots. So frankly, there is no other way to do this. We, I can't do a conditional A12 because, and then do this without subdivision variance because A12, which there's a lot of out here, doesn't allow single-family homes. So there, it's just, it's common sense. This is the best way for this property to develop. Putting a duplex on it would be, other than the, the small little ones that exist on 23rd Street, in which there are a total of five, six of them actually, one on the corner and five that are east of the corner, in little, you know, very old bungalows, it's, it's, it's just the best way to develop the property. There's, there's, you know, putting a big duplex on here doesn't really make sense. It's, and it's all about quality. We want to promote quality. This isn't about quantity. It's not increasing density. It's trying to do a high-quality job rather than do something that's going to not bring the caliber of development here up. So the three conditions that staff has put in the write-up that are, that they recommend, if you deem it in the best interest of the city to prove these subdivision variances are acceptable to my clients, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burdon?
I should have said, there, we are, we have canvassed the neighborhood and know absolutely no opposition from anyone.
I've got a few questions. So, you know, the subdivision, you know, I see the consistency here. I see that, you know, it's certainly consistent with the development along 24th Street that's, you know, recently occurred on this.
Mr. Wawa, I apologize. I'm getting a little old, and my hearing isn't all that good, so if you...
Okay, all right. Well, I'll try to speak up, and I do have a microphone right here, so I'll be...
I appreciate that.
Okay. But there's, you know, the staff also has, you know, looked at the, or, you know, we've looked at the subdivision variance, you know, and don't necessarily a hardship. Can you answer to anything with, with that? I mean, it's, it's R5D currently. There's no reason, other than preference, that it could be developed, you know, you know, with the single-family, you know, with the subdivision variance that's being requested. So do you have anything to, you know, some kind of a hardship, any kind of, you know, characteristics of the property or anything?
Well, the character of the, of everything that is around it, number one, that's, and that's as unique a situation, and truly, I believe, is a hardship. The other thing I want to mention, and I thank you for indirectly reminding me, in the informal, you all were shown a plat that was not in the write-up. It has nothing whatsoever to do with my clients at all, and it's not in this subdivision either, not in Woodland. Those were four 25-foot-wide lots that someone chose, where they could have built on a 50-foot lot, and a 50-foot lot, chose to try to get three lots at 33 and 1/3 foot frontage on each of those lots. And I was taken aback that that would be put up on the screen in an informal briefing, where we're not asking to do 33 and 1/3 foot-wide lots, where in that case, I'm sure there are mostly 50-foot lots, they're not in this subdivision. This is not that situation in any way, shape, manner, or form. And it's not west, or, excuse me, east of here on 24th Street. We're trying to do what fits into this community and not build duplexes instead of single-family homes. Now, the other circumstance that exists is the property to the east is also zoned R5D, and it is encumbered by the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Ordinance, which didn't exist when Woodland was platted, or when it was developed, or when this property was created, as it currently is in the R5D category, or category, zoning district, excuse me. And in order to minimize encroachment of the development on that property and also develop it the same, in the same fashion, we, if we did 50-foot-wide lots, we'd have a house that's in the resource protection seaward 50-foot from the ditch that's out there. So we're trying to do what's consistent with the pattern and what's, it's best for the neighborhood in terms of value long-term, as opposed to building a couple of duplexes, which will not be as valuable or will not promote the single-family redevelopment that this area is predominant as far as these blocks. And the longer this goes, where we don't have that take hold, the greater the likelihood that the B2 on the west corner, southwest corner of Barberton and 24th Street, becomes yet more multifamily development, and that is a possibility that you can't discount or rule out. We're trying to help establish and maintain the single-family residential character of these blocks and not have it turn into yet more multifamily. And that's, you know, that's part of the intent here, is to do a quality job and, and not, you know, do something that won't lift the neighborhood. It's all about quality of development as far as, as far as we're concerned.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? All right, well, I'm going to close then and open it to discussion among the, the planning Anybody like to, to lead off? Mr. Redmond?
Well, I accept what the applicant's representative just said about, about the quality of, of this project. I think that's really what this all boils down to. Mr. Chairman, I would, because I've thought about this, about this application, where's the hardship involved? In my view, the hardship on this property is that the zoning ordinance is simply too inflexible to be able to account for all of these various circumstances that arise, and certainly in a case where you have the opportunity to create a higher-quality development of single-family homes on larger lots, as opposed to doing a duplex, that seems to me as the highest, as the best outcome that we can expect from the, from this property. And the, and the, and it just, it doesn't, doesn't reflect that. So the, as I said this morning in our informal meeting, this to me, and a lot of these things do boil town to a much more simple choice than we sometimes will allow. And that is, it's either going to be a duplex, or it's going to be two single-family homes of the quality and the attractiveness that we saw on those, on those elevations. And I, for one, far prefer the idea of, thank you, of higher-quality, single-family homes. They're small lots, for sure. You'd have a duplex on a very, on, you know, would look very, very large on, on this lot if, if that were the case. So to me, this is certainly a far, far preferable outcome than, than could be achieved by right. I think we get a broad public, public benefit anytime we have an aesthetic improvement like this in the neighborhood, and a higher quality, and a higher value, and all of that. I think we ought to, we ought to grab these opportunities when, when we can get them. So I certainly support this application. I hope you all will, too. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Weiner?
I want to echo a little bit about what Mr. Redmond said, and I agree with him 100%. And as I said in the inform, I think we need to sit back and look at our ordinance and maybe do some changing. How you do that, I don't know. Let's, let's believe that up to the professionals. But then, all these different, because this is very normal, what's going on down there. When you have somebody that actually wants to invest their money and build, and tear down existing and build new, it's kind of hard for me to say no to that, so I'm going to support this also.
Mr. Bradley?
Similar to what's just been said, I appreciate the concern, the planning departments, you know, talking about as far as a precedent. But when you go out and look at, at that site, clearly, you know, the, the style and the, and the quality of the single-family homes is going to be an improvement to what is there. And you have two units, two units, you're not increasing the density, so I'm going to be supporting the application as well.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Mr. Frankfield?
So, I also support the application. I think it's a pretty attractive, it's, it's similar to many of the infield, much of the infield development at the north end, and this is the more attractive approach, so I also support it and, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application.
Oh, second. Okay, so we have a, a motion by Mr. Redmond and a second by Mr. Weiner. One thing is, with the approval, there are three conditions, just to, just to make note that, there are three conditions that, that the city has placed into the application that the, for this project, for this application, so. Okay. So, like I said, we have a motion by Mr. Redmond and a second by Mr. Weiner, and the vote is open.
Mr. Chairman, are there any abstentions?
Oh, are there any abstentions on this one? Thank you. Okay.
The vote is open. By vote of eight to zero, agenda item number one has been recommended for approval. Mr. Chairman, our last agenda item, if we're ready to move on, our agenda items five and six, Harris Teeter Properties and Courthouse Market Play Station LLC, which are applications for a modification of proffers and a conditional use permit for an automobile service station at 2,500 Nemo Parkway in Council District 2, formerly the Princess Anne District.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Harris Teeter. With me today are Garrett Maravetz, who's the regional real estate manager for Harris Teeter, and Joey Racer, who is a civil engineer with Kim Lee Horn, who are the civil engineers on this project. And so I don't forget, I want to thank Elizabeth for all of her hard work on this application through the Historic Review Board, as well as up and, up to today. If I could, is, is there someone who is here in opposition?
We have one speaker via WebEx.
Okay. So, as you all are familiar with this from the briefing you had this morning, our, I'll start with just an editorial comment. Our zoning ordinance is about to be 50 years old, 1973. Now, we've made a lot of changes, additions, what have you, but our definitions, i.e. service stations, now, I'm old enough, I remember when we had service stations on all the corners, okay? And this is a good thing that we has, as a community and as a country, for that matter, have progressed. We don't have service stations anymore. We have, we have places where people get their car repaired that aren't on every street corner. We have convenience stores with fuel service, and we have grocers with fuel service. This is not a service station. I'm sorry, but that's the def, that's the word we have in our zoning ordinance, and somewhere along the line, it would be helpful if that changed, because, you know, I haven't, I can't remember the last time. I don't know that I've ever done a service station use permit. I may have, but it's been 30-plus years ago. This, this project is, as you all know, replacing, redeveloping a, a bank site on this property. I had the privilege of rezoning this property in 2003 for Armada Hoffler, was a part of, you know, the whole, you know, shopping center. And, and as Elizabeth pointed out this morning, I also had the, the privilege of modifying the proffer agreement provision that we're requesting to modify today for Wawa, who was going to build on an out parcel created, at the time, there were no out parcels when we did the, the zoning on the property. And then Wawa kind of went in hibernation for a few years, and Armada Hoffler sold to 7-Eleven, and they came in and modified again, but that was just for their plan. But this, this property we've asked to modify has been modified previously. In addition to that, the out parcels along Princess Anne Road have been modified in their zoning and entirely, and that's why the condos are going up there now, because there wasn't enough retail demand down here for all that retail space that was envisioned with this rezoning. And the proffers are a part of the zoning district of the property. So all we're doing with the zoning district is we're changing the same thing, eliminating service station only from this property, not from all the properties, which is why we didn't do that in, back when the Wawa application came forward. Excuse me. So this property will have no, no direct access from Nemo Parkway. It was remained heavily landscaped and heavily screened. The conditions that are recommended by staff are all acceptable. The 10th one is not, and you all knew that. We, we have vending cabinets, and I've got, sorry, I don't have pictures to hand out to everyone, but I'll pass these out if I can give them. The vending machines, again, showing my age like the gas station, or the service station, I should say, these are cabinets which people open, like you're in the grocery store, and pick out a drink or what have you, and then pay for it at the kiosk. It's not a vending machine that you put cash into. It's not, it's not your, you know, not our parents' vending machines. The, and all that you see from the road is, is the black case. It's not, it faces inward to the, the shopping center. And so that's the only issue before us, and my clients, I've talked to them, I heard what you all had to say in the informal about the Sandbridge gas service for Harris Teeter, and having the cabinets placed in a brick structure around them to, to buffer them, and we are willing to do that. My client's willing to do that. The smaller case that has the propane, a couple of propane tanks that Elizabeth mentioned this morning, that, because of the bollards to protect it, would be screened totally with landscaping, as opposed to brick. It's out in the shopping, next to the shopping center, part of the parking lot. But we would agree to, to those conditions, that we screen that small case, which is very, very small, totally with landscaping, other than the opening that faces inward to the, to the site, to the parking lot. And the other cases, and you've seen them by now, hopefully they've come around, we would screen with brick, and that should, I'm confident that that will satisfy the history. screen with brick. And that should, I'm confident that that will satisfy the Historic Review Board, as, as Elizabeth said this morning as well. And with that, if you want to add some conditions to that effect, we're amenable to those. Lastly, I'll go ahead and, and address the letter that you all received, that I saw this morning for the first time from Mr. Glazer. And I'll, I'll give you my two cents, and I'm not trying to be the city attorney here, but proffers are a part of the zoning of the property that are created by city council. The parties to the proffers are the owner of the property and the city council. Proffers are not private deed restrictions. No property owner who buys a property years later has any right to veto any change to the zoning district, any more than you or I do, if our neighbor wants to come in and, you know, change zoning on his property. The 7-Eleven built has no exclusive within the shopping center for gasoline sales whatsoever. The gentleman who wrote the letter said, apparently purchased the property, the ground underneath 7-Eleven's got a long-term lease. Due diligence would say, you read your lease, you don't, they don't have an exclusive, no way, shape, or form, do they? On the other hand, Harris Teeter had a height limitation, and that's why the condos that are out here on Princess Anne Road are not 35 feet wide, but are 28. And that's the way we had them rezoned, because they had that in their lease. But the idea that some individual buying a piece of dirt later, one that's had the same proffer modified, could somehow have veto power if they don't agree, that's, that isn't the law at all. And I think that's the gentleman's proposal or his suggestion, and just, it's, it's, doesn't have any basis whatsoever. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burdon?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker who is via WebEx. Steve Glazer. Mr. Glazer, just a reminder, speaker policy, speakers have three minutes. We are going to unmute you. You, please state your name and then begin your comments.
Hi, my name is Steve Glazer. Can I join via video as well, or just by verbally? Okay. And you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Listen, I apologize for not being there in person, but regrettably, my mom recently passed away, and I find myself in South Florida getting ready for a hurricane here and putting her affairs in order. I did write this letter of objection, and I believe that you've all seen it. And the basis of my objection is not a matter of whether it is a good idea or a bad idea to have a additional service station here or a fuel station here, but simply the fact that as a matter of contract law, I am an indispensable party, and I have not been added as a party. And I disagree with Mr. Bourdon, I believe his name is, and in first-year contract law, one knows that all parties to a contract must be available and join in any amendment to that contract. This is not a zoning issue or a land use issue. You certainly are free to rezone my property. You're free to give conditional use permits. But a proffer is a private contract, not a zoning document. It's a private contract that voluntarily is entered into and expressly states that it's voluntarily entered into by the owners of certain properties. At the time, there were three separate owners, and the city of Virginia Beach. Now, that agreement voluntarily entered into was memorialized by a written contract, which is the proffer agreement. And that agreement was recorded among the land records, and it encumbers the property that I bought. It encumbers the shopping center, and it also encumbers the property, which is the subject of today's hearing and this application. And I submit that there is no unilateral ability to amend a private contract without all of the parties to that contract. Now, you can rezone the property. You can rezone it to permit gas stations, service stations. You can rezone it to do whatever you want. But even if you do so, there is a valid and enforceable private contract that exists and encumbers this property and says that there shall not be bingo parlors, there shall not be service stations. I think we all know what a service station is, whether they provide the additional services. It sells fuel. And this is what is intended to be here. And my objection is that I am a necessary and indispensable party, and that that document, now, I'm not objecting, and in fact, I think it's wrong, but if you want to give a conditional use permit, I suppose you can do so. That's within your right. But I do not believe that, that this body or the city council has the right, without my jointer, to amend the contract.
There are no more speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I guess that was three minutes? Is that the?
Yes, sir. It was three minutes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Burdon, would you like to come up? Oh, oh, yeah, we have questions. Sorry.
I have a question for the Speaker of Staff or Mrs. Wilson. What he said, was that, is there any truth to that, or?
A proffer agreement is not a contract. That's not how it's governed in Virginia. I don't know what, where Mr. Glazer is a lawyer, but it's not considered that way in, in Virginia. And if, even if we want to take Mr. Glazer's take, then you have no authority to deal with it, because it's a private legal matter between those people. Not that I agree with that. I think it is a proffer, and he does not have to be included. However, if we take his argument, you have nothing to do with that, and you can just move forward.
Exactly. That's what I was getting at. That's what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Can we have questions? Are there any questions for Mr. Glazer? Okay. All right. With that, Mr. Burdon?
Just, just ever so quickly, there, there are private deed restrictions placed on the entirety of the shopping center by the owner who developed the shopping center. Okay? That is enforceable. If someone were to put in their private deed restrictions something that gave every owner the ability to approve this, that, or the other thing, that would be enforceable as a contract. This is a proffer agreement between the owner of the property at the time that becomes a part of the zoning district, and that is the jurisdiction of the city council, of the governing body. At no point did the city of Virginia Beach give up its zoning authority to anybody who comes along later and buys a piece of property that they can tell somebody what they can and can't do with theirs, as far as usurping the city's zoning authority. His argument, I guess, would be, if we came forward, instead of modifying the proffer and said, "We want to just rezone it to straight B-2 without any proffers and get a use permit," that'd be okay. Since it doesn't make any sense from a zoning and land use standpoint, and it certainly doesn't make sense from a contract standpoint. Thank you.
Mr. Burdon, can you sit there for one second? Are there any questions for Mr. Burdon?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Burdon. I know you said that you had no problem with modifying the enclosures around the machines, and your clients don't, so we're, we're good if we modify that condition?
Yes, we, Harris Teeter will agree that the, the vending cabinets will be enclosed on three sides with, with brick.
Okay. Thank you.
And the, and the one, the one that is not by the kiosk, that is just a small one that's for propane, that is shown on the plan, that one will be landscaped all around.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I'm gonna close and open it to discussion among the, the planning commissioners. Would anybody like to lead, lead off?
I'll start. I guess to staff, how would you word that on the condition, take number 10 completely away? And is it up to us to come up with wording?
I have taken the liberty to try to put some words together for the condition at the direction of the commission. The, Mr. Weiner and, and Mr. Chair, if it's okay for me to propose a condition for that?
Please do. That would be amended condition number 10. Is that correct?
Yes. Amended condition number 10 would read, outdoor vending machines or merchandise display shall be screened from view from Nemo Parkway by a brick enclosure or landscaping as approved by the Director of Planning.
It's good with me. Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else? No one else? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with this application. I have no objections to it, and I'm, I appreciate, Mr. Weiner's, you know, I just went through the, you know, Historic Courthouse District Review Committee, and they, they approved it. The, you know, I prefer not to have outdoor vending machines, but I think, you know, to mitigate that. And we've also approved recently one off of Princess Anne and South Plaza. So, and, and that theme and with, you know, the mitigation of the, the brick screening, you know, I'm, I find this application, you know, acceptable. So.
Mr. Chairman, I may approve of items five and six with the modification to condition number 10.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Weiner and a second by Mr. Bradley. Are there any abstentions? Okay.
The vote is open. By vote of eight to zero, agenda items five and six have been recommended for approval with condition 10 as amended.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. I hope everybody has a nice Thanksgiving.
So, Madam Cork, that was the last?
Yes, sir. No more items.
Agenda item? Okay. Thank you all for participating in today's planning commission hearing. The meeting is adjourned.